They foul.
Drop it on.
Where did you go?
Virtual simulator.
I don't understand.
Oh, okay.
I have thoughts, not fully thoughts.
Never.
Missing three. Sarah or Tony Sarah.
Hey, we're going to call the order. The regular meeting is Batavia City Council from Monday, February 5th, 2024. I would all ask that you always please rise for a brief invocation to be filed by the pledge allegiance. Tonight, in the community, we are thankful for many great things and kindnesses that have been expressed in our community. We are very, very appreciative of all the good work that's being done on a variety of fronts to support projects such as the Flag Day Monument and the kind of revitalization of the Riverwalk area. And we want to thank the Park District and those on the Flag Day Committee and also those from our school district who really make Batavia a proud place for many people who want to call home. And so we are ever thankful that we have a community like this that goes so far that we even now are gathering up prom dresses for girls that cannot afford to get one that they will be placed for them to pick one for themselves and in their future, thanks to the good efforts of hardworking and thoughtful Batavia residents. Tonight, as always, we ask for a special understanding and blessing on the city council as we go about the vital motions that are to be made tonight. And we just ask that all the aldermen vote in what they feel is the best interest for the future and the betterment of Batavia in the days ahead. Also, tonight, we want to ask for a special blessing on all those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each and every one of these men and women from our town and from our country as they go about their missions in the U.S. military operations. And finally, we just ask for a great degree of appreciation for the fine community that we have. And I know we have some folks who are sick or infirmed or have various medical issues. And we just ask that we share our blessing upon them and that many all will return to a good state of health. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, Serone, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Chanset?
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Euer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vocal singer?
Here.
Twelve present, two absent, Your Honor.
We have twelve present, two absent, so we obviously have the necessary form to conduct business. I will, under item four, and to remind you all that if you're going to speak tonight, we ask that you come up and use the microphone here on the podium in front of the city council so that anybody who's watching this on Batavia Access TV will have the ability to hear what you have to say. It's very difficult for them to be able to pick up the sound if you're not by that microphone. All right, moving to item five. Items to be removed and/or changed on tonight's agenda. Does anybody have one?
Your Honor, you need to pull the mic a little bit closer because it's not picking up. If it's not green, it's not on. Is that working?
It's not working.
Maybe push the stem down.
One, two, three?
Push the stem down into the... Basically into the base. I don't think it's because the... There we go. The little green light up on top is what we need to see.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, moving then to no items from the council to be removed, added, or changed. Well, the big item for tonight is the consent agenda. And that honor goes to Alderman Beck as she's going to read this very lengthy and a lot of money in this consent agenda. Alderman Beck.
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file the committee of the whole minutes from January 24, 2024, special meeting, January 9th, 2024, and January 23rd, 2024; the historical preservation commission minutes from December 11th, 2023; the building reports from January 2024; the November 23, 2023, and the December 2023 city council financial reports; and for approval, the January 19th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,172,086.76; and February 2nd, 2024, payroll of $1,054,176.50; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,527,723.53; ordinance 2024-9 surplus of vehicle; ordinance 2024-10 donation of equipment to chip in; resolution 2024-8-R approving the city of Batavia strategic plan for 2024 through 2028; resolution 2024-11-R approving a master services agreement with Fairgram Engineering and Environmental; resolution 2024-12-R approving task order number one with Fairgram for public works yard improvements, drying bed and exterior storage, and final engineering design services; resolution 2024-10-R approval of telecommunications franchise agreement with Unity Dark Fiber; ordinance 2024-8, extension of 180-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of certain building and zoning applications for LI Light Industrial and GI General Industrial Properties in the South River Street Gateway Overlay District; for approval, the Class F liquor license for Batavia Main Streets cocktails in the park; ordinance 2024-14-R approving task order number 42 with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for construction engineering services for the 2023-2024 lead and galvanized steel water service line replacement project; resolution 2024-15-R for a new police vehicle; resolution 2024-16-R, task order number 10 with Baxter and Woodman for GIS stormwater field utility data; resolution 2024-17-R authorizing purchase of passenger vehicles for public works and information technology departments; ordinance 2024-12, amending the city code to allow happy hours; resolution 2024-13-R authorizing execution of a notice of intent to award for the 2023-2024 lead and galvanized steel water service line replacement projects to Five Star Energy Services. Did I miss anything? Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Beck, second by Alderman Lehman for the approval of the consent agenda as presented and read. Any discussion? Court, call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Consent agenda is approved. We're going to go to this matters from the public is next, and I'm noting that we didn't... Oh, we do have the Batavia Chamber of Commerce down here. I didn't see that. Okay. So do we have any matters from the public for items not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Would you come up and use the microphone, please?
No green light. Oh, there it is. Thank you.
Could you give us your name for the record?
Yes, certainly. Gary Swick. I'm an upstream resident of Elgin, and I'm here tonight representing Friends of the Fox River, which has a watershed-wide interest. You may not be aware, but Friends of the Fox River works with your staff. Together, we provide monthly water sampling in Mahoney Creek for the Illinois Water Survey and an annual shoreline cleanup in May. You adopted a proclamation for It's Our Fox River Day last year, and your community participated in a cleanup event that day. Thank you very much for your support, and we feel together we keep on fixing the fox. Batavia should be very proud of their long history of being a leader in the Fox River Valley, to be a green and sustainable community. Adopting a single-use plastic bag fee belonging to the Greenest Region Compact and the Climate Action Plan are commendable efforts. Having a very active environmental commission and their various advocacy projects is a model for other communities. In addition, I see Batavia as having done an exceptional job of respecting the riverfront as a space for the public to interact with the river, as opposed to privatizing it with multi-level residential structures. Each town only has one riverfront, and Batavia's is a good example of connecting people and phosphorus removal at wastewater treatment facilities, and Batavia invested $47 million for that purpose and other upgrades. In 2022, the Fox River Study Group recommended dam removals, and now the Army Corps of Engineers and Illinois Department of Natural Resources are fully funding dam deconstruction. The timing is very significant. We're grateful to Batavia for once again acting as a leader and deciding to remove your dam. We encourage you to sign on to the Army Corps of Engineers plan and get excited about your dam's removal in 2027. Especially considering the condition of your dam, we're very fortunate to have federal and state assistance. Friends of Fox has advocated for dam removal for 30 years. This has been consistently supported by decades of local research. Regardless of the science, misinformation has continued to confuse the uninformed. Politically, dam removal has been accurately referred to as the Third Rail. It has always been a contentious issue throughout the region. I was very excited that your council previously hired a consultant to offer several alternatives and that you solicited public input. However, I encourage you as an elected council to make decisions based upon expert information as opposed to special interest voices. In a democracy, public voice is essential, but the decisions are made by the representatives who usually rely on advice from experts. Based upon my extensive interaction with the public, I know that the majority favor dam removal or want to know more. Opposers are single-issue and self-interested individuals. This is a decision for the future. The river has freely flowed for over 10,000 years. We have degraded and dammed it for less than 200. For the past 50 years, we have made great progress in river restoration. What was a polluted and dying ecosystem in my youth is now recovering. Restored health will bring new opportunities. The establishment of the fabulous Fox Water Trail will bring a variety of economic development opportunities for recreationists and the services that support them. Depot Pond has nostalgic value to my generation, but a free-flowing Fox River will be a paradise for paddlers and anglers in the future. Batavia is geographically well situated to become a recreational destination. The purposes of dam removal include to address the Fox River's water quality impairments, eliminate a known public safety hazard and liability, return the free passage of fish and mussels upriver, re-enable natural sediment transport downriver, and eliminate the cost of maintaining obsolete infrastructure. It should be noted that 100% funding support for this once-in-a-generation opportunity is only for complete dam removals. Partial removals, channel modifications, and shoreline improvements generally are not eligible for state and federal funding under this program. Friends of the Fox River is here to help you and your community understand the merits of river restoration. We're available for a variety of services, and I am visiting all nine community councils that are eligible for dam removal assistance to offer Friends of the Fox River support. Our goal is to address fears about dam removal and generate excitement about the future of free-flowing Fox River. Thank you for the hard work that you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody on the council have anything to say? All right, moving then to item number eight, which is the Batavia Active Transportation Advisory Commission.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jared Heck. I'm a commissioner on the Batavia Active Transportation Advisory Commission, and it's my pleasure to give you a quarterly update on some recent changes and current initiatives that our commission has undertaken. So, under the heading of changes, we have a new charter and an expanded mission thanks to the council's work last year to now include pedestrian safety. We were the Batavia Bicycle Commission. That's been expanded now to include work advising the city in promoting pedestrian safety. We've also brought a couple of new members on board, including Joshua Einstein Curtis and Regan Bowle. Regan is with me here tonight, as is my fellow Commissioner Joanne Spitz. And these quarterly reports and updates to you are something relatively new as well. So we'll be here at least four times a year to let you know what's going on with the work we're doing. So on current initiatives and priorities, we're focused on advising, educating, and maintaining safety. In the realm of advising, we were pleased to meet with council member Beck recently to discuss possible solutions for improving pedestrian safety near the intersection of First and Water Streets. With the growth of great new retail and service businesses in that area, pedestrians and bicycle traffic can be expected to increase. Options we recommended include potentially implementing a one-way traffic restriction on parts of First Street, potentially to include bike lanes, as well as painting or marking the intersection in a manner that should have a calming effect on eastbound First Street traffic. So we'd like to thank council member Beck for inviting us to advise her on this matter, as well as Gary Holm of the Public Works Department for providing perspective on the city's current and future plans for road maintenance and routing of pedestrian and cycling traffic. On the education front, we continue to support and promote bike and walk-to-school days through our contacts in the Batavia Public School District. This includes providing posters and supporting information schools can push out and use to promote these annual events. We've also met with a local bike shop owner to learn more about e-bikes so that our commission can consider how best to promote safety for all in light of this expanding new technology and its growing presence. We're planning to continue prior year's outreach events and possibly expand those. In the past, we've had booths at various Batavia events and festivals to share information on bike safety. Recently, we were contacted by a local scout troop to develop a bike safety training event for kids, sometimes known as a bike rodeo. So we hope to have an update for you on that on our next quarterly meeting. And we also continue to actively post safety messages to the community via our social media pages. And special thanks to Lori Botterman for supporting us in this regard by helping us update our logos and website. On the maintaining safety front, we've placed new safety posters in several kiosks around our trail system. We've been monitoring, assessing the maintenance status of five new bike repair stations bought last year by the city and installed by partners in the King County Forest Preserve, Public School District, Batavia Apartments, and the Park District. And we recently met with the Park District representative and agreed to assess the feasibility of buying an additional... The Park District buying an additional repair station to replace the one outside City Hall here. We're also considering the possibility of an agreement with the Park District to formalize our mutual understanding of our role potentially and continue to monitor and assess the maintenance needs of bike repair stations in the community. So, to summarize some next steps, we want to increase our community outreach events in partnership with other civic organizations. Longer term, our goal is to aid the City of Batavia, already a bronze-level bicycle-friendly community, to achieve the next level, silver status. And we will continue to report out to the council quarterly on our progress. Thanks for your time.
Thanks for coming down. We appreciate this because it's good that the council knows all the good work that you're doing, and it's understandable that there's obviously a few questions. Does anybody on the council have any questions? Alderman Saron?
I just have one. Are there some key things that can be done, low-hanging fruit, to get to that silver level?
The low-hanging fruit, I think, is the community outreach and education events. Those are the lowest costs. I think things that at least our commission has within its power and grasp. There's the more challenging things have to do with infrastructure upgrades. Things like miles of bike lanes would be an example of that. So that's a short answer to your question.
And just to add on to that response, a couple other elements. There were the data elements. We really didn't have some of the data necessary to provide in the last application. And then as far as miles of bike path go, we've got the 10-year Bike Ped Plan that has plans to add miles of bike path as well that we hope will help.
And I would be remiss if I did not specifically thank Laura for your overall leadership in helping us get more connected with your staff in these last six to 12 months. So thank you for that.
Anybody else? Thank you. Look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. And we have the president and CEO right here with us tonight, too.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me to your meeting this evening, talking about what's going on at the chamber. First of all, I know that the groundhog did not see a shadow, so we have less than six weeks left of winter, which is pretty exciting. But we know cold weather will return, and when that happens, our restaurants typically are slow, and it hurts. So we've revived restaurant madness, revamped it this year to be something a little bit different, to get us out of our houses. We're calling it Shiver by the River, the Batavia Restaurant and Dining Pass, the Dining and Drinks Pass. I have flyers that I'm passing around. It's a new mobile pass that you can download on your phone and visit all of our exciting restaurants and dining locations and earn prizes as you go along. Instead of just being a one-week program, we made it a four-week program, so you could enter many times. There'll be prizes and gift certificates to our local restaurants and a big grand prize of chamber bucks. So you could scan that QR code that's on that flyer and download it now. The promotion will go from February 15th through March 14th. So please do that. Tell your family and friends. We want everybody to participate and support our local restaurants. I also want to mention that we... I passed out the invitation to our Inspire event. It's our annual event that celebrates Marge and Dave Brown, our 2023 Citizens of the Year, and Batavia RSVP as the Spirit of Batavia Award, and the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization, and the Flag Day Committee being honored with the Batavia Impact Award. We are celebrating them at Revelry 675, catered by enticing cuisine this year. The date will be Thursday, April 25th, and registration's now open. So please go to our website and sign up for that wonderful event. I want to say that the chamber is inviting each of you to join us to go to Italy. I mentioned this last month. We're doing a wonderful trip to Italy in October. A lot of people have been interested in. It's going to be exciting. It's going to be a wonderful trip, departing October 22nd. If you'd like to join us, please go to our website. It's on our main page, both Shiver by the River and the Trip to Italy is on our main page, so you could click on that to get more information. So come join us. I want to extend a warm welcome to the businesses that joined the chamber this past month. We are delighted to have Spain... I'm sorry, Spine Pain Performance. It's a chiropractor in Geneva joined the Batavia Chamber. Keller Williams Innovate, Kathy Hansen, a new realtor, is joining us. Infusion Painting, 212 Degree Construction, and Blackberry Pines Residential Assisted Living in Elburn. For more information on these wonderful businesses, please go to our website directory. I also would like to mention our upcoming events. We have our not-for-profit forum on Wednesday, this Wednesday, February 7th at 8:00 a.m. This has been a great forum, well-attended by many of the not-for-profit leaders in the community. They have decided to arrange for volunteer fairs, so we are helping facilitate that, which is wonderful to get our... Get volunteers for our not-for-profits and get awareness for them. That will be... More details will be coming, but it will be held May 9th at the library. We have a webinar on new corporate compliance reporting law that will be February 8th at 11:30. If you want to register for that, you could go to our website for the Zoom link. Our Batavia Women in Business Luncheon and Networking Bingo will be February 13th at 11:30. Coffee and Commerce next Wednesday is our morning networking. That's February 14th at 8:00 a.m. We are doing a wonderful ribbon cutting for the Batavia City Hall renovation, so I hope you all can join us for that. That will be a great event, February 19th at 6:00 p.m. Mayor, you will oversee that, I hope. Of course you will. We have a networking event at X-Golf on February 21st at 4:30, and a multi-chamber progressive networking breakfast on February 22nd at 7:30. Before I introduce my esteemed guest, does anybody have any questions for me on any of the programs we're running?
Hanging them open a window at work.
I am definitely okay with that. And if you would like additional copies, just let me know. Thank you. Yes, Dustin?
Hi, my weekly newsletter. Can I post the QR code?
Yes, please do.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other supportive questions like that? I like them. Now I'd like to introduce Enrique Masias. He's the owner of Henry Tree, your friendly local tree expert. I'm going to invite him. He just had a baby, a new baby, but he still was able to come here tonight. Come on up, talk about your wonderful business. Enrique's a graduate from BHS, too, a lifer here.
Hello, everyone. How you doing tonight? Hopefully well, hopefully well. She said I'm a proud father of a baby boy, so on Saturday, Mateo's name. Hope to be a little more prepared today, but it was gonna happen. So first, I'd just like to introduce myself. My name's Enrique Masias. I am from Batavia here. I was graduated '02. I grew up here on the Fox River, played around with a lot of the same familiar faces you guys probably all know. I started Henry Tree about almost 10 years ago. Basically, it's a full-scale tree service. We've been doing business here in the tri-city areas and beyond for, like I said, about 10 years, doing everything from pruning to removals to plant healthcare to consulting, everything like that. So we're everything from your small pruning projects to full-scale land clearing for construction companies and whatnot, so any kind of land development. Let's see here. Basically, you know, I had a storefront here, too. It's Down Home Customs is a byproduct of what I do. So 10 years ago, when I kind of decided to start this venture, it was more so, obviously, a passion to trees, but also what can we do with some of the waste that's coming from those projects as well. So with that, we do co-op with compost company, companies anyways, that do anything from compost to mulch, to many things like that. We do firewood wholesale pretty much only. And then our newest ventures is basically we're doing sawmill and kiln-dried lumber. So that's actually the biggest thing. Probably it's kind of like my baby at the moment, too, is we really started ramping that production up. And that's kind of the next phase. It was something I was really hopeful to do when I started the business was to really get to this stage. So it's really exciting now that I'm actually here and able to come up with a finished product to put in your hands, basically. So basically, too, is we're getting this lumber pretty much all over. So everyone from your crafters to... We're providing lumber, excuse me, to woodshop classes in schools right now. What else we have? I'm working with several builders and things like that to do anything from beams, mantles, tables, countertops, and things of that nature. So it's just really exciting to get to this stage anyways because we've been doing the pruning, removals, and all that stuff as scheduled. But now we're able to do, basically, come full circle. So let's see here. I don't want to bore you guys too much, but either way, let me see. Our website is henrytreco.com. You can find us on Facebook and Instagram, all those things, too. We do offer free estimates all year round, basically. We do, like I said, consulting, property consultations, and plant healthcare diagnosis. So what that's going to be is basically, if you've got a tree that's looking kind of rough, you know, always tell people to look up in your canopies, June, July, when things are leafed out. It's a good time of year to really kind of get a good eye where your trees should be. And if you're starting to notice a yellowy canopy in something that shouldn't be, it's a good time to call your arborist and certified arborist to come take a look and assess your trees. So, and not to mention storm damage and things like that, too. So, and not to mention like storm damage and things like that, too. We're, you know, we're always happy to look at that stuff as well. So, let's see. We do offer senior, first responder, and veteran discounts all year round, too. So, again, you know, our phone number is 630-402-7355. So, yeah, does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions of our?
Do you have an outlet for the, the wood that you're?
So, right now, it's just out of my shop, you know, and it's, it's pretty much, you know.
So, just contacting me directly?
But we are looking to get back into brick and mortar here in the next, hopefully, three to six months, basically. Working on that right now. So.
We can just contact you through the website?
Yep, website. You can give us a call, anything like that.
All righty.
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Actually, the administrator's report.
Well, good evening. Just have a few things that I wanted to make everybody aware of. The city has invested in a texting solution for our residents to both notify, notify them in the event of emergencies, but also allow our residents to sign up for text messages about certain topics that they might be interested in, events in town, news. And so, in the next few weeks, we're going to be sending out information about this in everyone's utility bills so that they're aware that this is coming and they can get signed up for it. We're calling ours Alert Batavia, and it will allow you to sign up for many different types of alerts that you might be interested in. But again, as I said, it would also allows us, in the event of an emergency, to send out text messages to keep people safe. And I just wanted to provide you an update on the historical marker program that we talk about from time to time. We have actually received our first 10 markers, and they're going to be around downtown. We're hoping to get those installed by early May. And then, we will be hosting an event that will be a tour of several of the markers. But the markers will have their own website where you can go, and there's a little bit of information on each one of those plaques. But if you really want to do a deep dive, there'll be additional information on that website. And as well, the committee is getting together to plan the next 10 markers. So, that's a really exciting project. We love to celebrate our history here in Batavia. And then, in community and economic development, staff has narrowed the Firms for the South River Street Quarter Study down to three, and we will be inviting those to an upcoming committee of the whole meeting for you to meet an interview. And thereafter, we'll make a selection of the final, the final one. And that's all I have today, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions of Laura?
Thank you very much.
Very good. Do we have other business from the city council?
Well, then, quickly, I'll give you the mayor's report, and we can adjourn. Number one, I've asked maybe at the next meeting to have a presentation about the prom dress collection activity that's going on in Batavia. And that is a very, very nice gesture on the part of a whole bunch of people. And I've, every time they do it, I have somebody call or say to me, boy, this was a great idea. That dress has been hanging in my closet for 24 years, and now I finally found a good use for it. And so, I, we get a lot of that here, and I'm glad that we're doing it. And I think we, we have a reputation of having a very nice prom in Batavia. So, I would just hope that everybody would continue on with that tradition and continue that to go forward. I would like to take a moment to publicly acknowledge some good work from our city staffs, starting with our public works folks, specifically in the, in the electric and in the, in the street maintenance situation. We've done a fabulous job of trying to keep the streets clean and open and non-slippery, and the sidewalks downtown have all been cleaned. So, we, on the bad, the one really bad storm we had, we quickly rose to the occasion and got everything kind of so people could still move around. So, I've talked to some other mayors in the area who didn't have that experience, and their councils and the mayors are catching all kinds of grief from residents about why the snow didn't get picked up and plowed. And we don't have that in Batavia, so I'm very thankful for the good group that we do have. At the fire department, we've had an ongoing record number of ambulance calls. We're just being overwhelmed with them. It's not unusual that many days we do 10 or more. And they're running all over town. And as you know, we're a member of Tri-City Ambulance, so we do have six ambulances available. But there's many times when both Batavia ambulances are busy. And then, if that's the case, Geneva will be there to back us up on, on a third call. And if they get busy, then St. Charles moves and one of their ambulances to the West Side Geneva Station. So, we always got somebody in the middle of the Tri-Cities ready to go if that happens. So, I've been very pleased with that operation because I've now had several people mention to me very, very recently how thankful they were that Batavia had the fire and police departments that we do and the quick responses that have come in. The one that I think is under, under a lot of pressure, though, and I want to make mention of this, is our police department. And I want to announce that the chief is just about to start a, first thing we're going to do is we're going to visit all the senior living communities in town because they seem to be the target of attack. And we're getting all these, I'll call them scam artists, trying to get into the senior citizen communities and get them to do something in which they give them their credit card number. And that becomes a major problem. Or they try to get them some, give me a donation in honor of this organization that your grandson is a member of. I mean, there's just a lot of strange things going on here. So, the police are putting together an actual program, and they're going to be going into each one of the senior living communities in the next several months. I believe we're starting at the homestead, and they're going to start there, and we're going to go to the rest of them and tell people, be very, very cautious. I've, I had one senior citizen I know tell me that she had gotten on her phone seven different calls one day from nobody that she ever recognized. And so, based on me breathing in her ear about it, she didn't answer nothing. And she later found out by some of her friends that several of them got visited by those same people. So, we are under attack in Batavia in our senior citizen community, and I just wanted to make the council aware that, that it is a very troubling situation. And the final thing is just kind of a, almost a fun thing. We're, we're in the process of doing these historic markers that Laura's just reported on. And one of the markers is going to be up at the corner of Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street. And it's going to commemorate the fact that on two different occasions, two gentlemen, 41 years apart, stopped in that intersection and were noted in, by Batavians, and both of them were to become the President of the United States. And the first one was Dwight D. Eisenhower, and he was here in 1919 on July 21st. He was part of a military convoy that was trash continental traveling in the United States to figure out where they should build an intercontinental highway from the Atlantic Ocean to the Pacific Ocean. And they had started in Washington, DC, and they ended up out in San Francisco. But it took them 62 days to do it. And when they came Route 31, which they brought, they came out of Aurora and came up and went out to, up to Geneva, and then went west on what today is South Street there by the Little Traveler. And when they came through Batavia, they got down in front of Mooseheart. And Mooseheart had brought all the kids that were then staying at Mooseheart out to see this convoy. So, they stopped the convoy for a few minutes and showed off some of the military equipment that they were getting. And then, they started up again. And the hill, which all of us have traveled, going up the hill, when you get past Mooseheart, there's that big hill there on Route 31. Well, that hill at that time was much more steeper than it is now. It's been tapered down several times over the years. So, they bring all these military vehicles up on the top of the hill. And when they got them up to about where the Moose Lodge now is, everything was overheating, and it was just one big cloud of steam. And so, the city Public Works Director by the name of Ally Perry had heard they were coming, and he went down there and told the military boys, if they wanted to come up to in front of the then-new high school, which is now now the library site, they had a horse-drinking trough right next to the road that was hooked onto the city water system. And if he could get that convoy there, he could give them as much water as he needed to refill his vehicles. So, they lumbered up Batavia Avenue from what today would be Millview Drive all the way up to Wilson Street. And when they got there, they had all these vehicles that needed water. So, Lieutenant Colonel that was in the convoy went out and stood in the middle of Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street for about 45 minutes while they rewatered everything. And this guy's name was Dwight D. Eisenhower. And he stood in that intersection and did that. So, the plaque's going to tell that story. Then, on October 25th, 1960, there was a presidential campaign going on, and the Democratic candidate, John F. Kennedy, came through Batavia on his way down the Fox River Valley. And lo and behold, he stopped literally at the same location because Batavia High School was about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and Batavia High School had let all the kids in the high school out to see Kennedy come by. The McQuain School principal decided he was going to take all his kids out and to do it. And when he heard about it, Sam Rottolo, who was principal over Louise White, at the old Louise White up at the corner at, at Wilson and Washington Avenue, he shut his school down and brought his kids over. So, there was about 1,000 kids standing at that intersection. So, we have pictures of Kennedy's visit, and he got up in the car and gave a speech. We even have a copy of the speech. It lasted a minute and 41 seconds, but he did speak. And then, there was all these great pictures taken of him. And so, those are all going to be included. The one thing that we cannot find, and I want to make this statement for, hopefully, maybe somebody knows somebody, in 1919, when this convoy came through, the camera was just being invented. And we know we had several people in Batavia that had cameras. And we would just put the word out that if anybody's got any pictures of a military convoy in town and they can't figure out where it is, it's probably this. And the Historical Society, I'm sure, would love to have those pictures for future books and whatever have you, because that's, that's the one scene that, you know, and hopefully, maybe Eisenhower shown standing in the middle of the street. But it is kind of one of the more historic moments in the history of Batavia that we think it might be there, but we don't have it yet, as far as a picture goes. So, I just wanted to use this forum to spread that word to the community that we are looking for any pictures of the military convoy from 1919, and specifically, anything up around Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street. Because everybody's going to be reading about it when that plaque goes up here in a few weeks as to what really happened there. So, I've talked too much, but I wanted to get my words out and let everybody know what was going on. So, anybody care to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malley. How was it? Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor?